Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Monday, May 23rd, Meeting of the Mashpee Board of Selectmen, Mashpee Town Hall, being broadcast live on local cable 18, streamed live on the town of Mashpee website, mashpeamass.gov backslash channel dash 18. We'll convene an open session, begin with a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ask for a moment of silence in recognition of the loss for the people in Buffalo. All right, we'll start. We have a motion on the minutes. Do we have minutes? We do not have minutes.
No.
No, I don't, we don't have any. We do not. All right. We'll start off with 6:30 PM poll hearing. The absence of our clerk, I'll just read the notice. The Town of Mashpee Board of Selectmen will conduct a poll hearing on petition Mass 2022-07 from Verizon New England Incorporated and EverSource Energy DBA and Star Electric Company, proposing to place one new poll, 53 slash 52, on Mashpee Neck Road. Petition is necessary to improve the existing poll line on Mashpee Neck Road. Said hearing will take place Monday, May 23rd, 2022 at 6:30 PM in the Quayt Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, North Mashpee, Mass. Wayne Avial, the hearing?
The hearing is being conducted as we speak. The both EverSource and Verizon were notified to be here if they had anything to say, and we sent out the public notice, so if there's no public comment.
Does anyone from the public have any comment on this one? Yes, sir. If you would come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
Tom Stanton representing Verizon. The request is for the proper height over the driveways. At present, there isn't enough clearance over the driveway, so we're requesting a poll to be set there.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public have any comments? Seeing now to look for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, so move.
Second? All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Is there a motion on the request?
I'd like to make a motion to approve petition number MA 2020-07 from Verizon New England Incorporated and EverSource Energy DBA and Star Electric Company, proposing to place one new poll, 532, on Mashpee Neck Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's close enough to 6:35. We'll start. We have a public hearing on Canonshead Road. Read the notice. Sue and Deco, Mashpee 150 dash six dash D. Mashpee Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing Monday, May 23rd, 2022, 6:35 in the Quayt Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass. The purpose of said hearing to discuss the private to public road conversion of Canonshead Avenue, as shown in the plans entitled Canonshead Avenue Road in Mashpee, Mass., dated January 27th, 2022, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. Copies of the plan may be viewed in offices of Board of Selectmen at Mashpee Town Hall. Comments can be submitted and questions via email prior to today's meeting, date and time. So who do we want to start with? This is a, we got the initial petition, and this is the process we follow. Initial petition, do an estimate of cost. Tonight's hearing provides that estimate, that the estimated betterment cost would be $227,965.50, which is $28,495.68 per eight property owners. As I recall, this would be the maximum allowable betterment. The actual cost will be determined by construct, final construction. The purpose of tonight is to get comments, share with people that information, get comments, and then to let the public know that if the petitioners choose to move forward at the October 17th town meeting, we would need a petition signed by a majority of the property owners on the road, which would be, so five of eight, by Monday, July 11th, 2022. So we can take comment, try and answer questions people have, but the ball is in the court of the residents, whether you want to proceed with this or not. Does anybody have any comments, questions? Meredith?
I have just a couple of questions.
Just, we all know you, but just for the record, identify yourself.
Oh, Meredith Chadwick.
Thank you.
Mayor of Canonshead, I guess. That's what I'm called anyways. How come all the residents, all eight of us, didn't get a letter that I got in the mail? That's what I'd like to know. That was my first one.
I don't have an answer.
The second, when this first started, the town taking over private roads, they used to include corner lots, Cayuga, Canonshead, Seneca, on that one. How come they're not including that now? Those people in those, they're not included in the eight people on the street.
I'd ask Catherine if you'd just address us on the policy on corner lots.
It's based on where they have their physical address. So a lot of the corner lots are either fronting on and have an address on Ninnigrit or on Oneida, so those are not part of the, what's considered Canonshead property owners.
Okay, because I'm going back a few years when this first started, and though there was a discussion on the people that had corner lots, they would be charged double. And they would have been charged way back then, but not as much. They would have been charged the $28,000 that the eight of us would, you know, if we went through with this, would pay now, but now it's totally different. It's, you know, it's just eight people. You've got, we've got one, two, three, four houses that are on corner lots that could add, that would give 12 people. But it's, as I say, the rules have changed and nobody's, you know.
Right. Well, this is, I believe this is the first petition that we've received from Canonshead.
Oh, yeah.
But generally, it's based on where your, what your property address is.
Okay. Now, property addresses, is it the front door or is it the driveway?
It's your legal address.
That's not answering my question.
It's your legal address.
Who makes the legal addresses?
That is through the assessors department in GIS. I'm not sure.
All right. Well, I'm told, because I've already checked into this, that your legal, whoever your driveway falls is your address. I have a corner lot person whose address is Oneida, and her front door is Oneida, but her main driveway, or her driveway, only driveway, is on Canonshead. So questionnaire, I mean, it's like the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing. You know, I've got, if you're, I was always brought up saying, wherever your front door falls is your address. Or if you've got two driveways, which one decides what address you're on?
I'd like, Rodney?
Mr. Chair, two things. Number one, to answer your question, did receive confirmation that certified letters were sent to all of those addresses. That's number one. Number two, in terms of this question and the answer, what I would suggest, Meredith, is that you give me a call tomorrow, and I will hook you up with all of the people that will provide you with the direct answers to these questions, because I don't think it's fair to tie up a policymaking board with this.
Yeah. It's just that everybody's, every, you know, place you're looking, you know, I think it was the post office or somebody else that I checked, just said, if your driveway's on Canonshead, you're on Canonshead. If your driveway's on Oneida, you're on Oneida. Heck with the front door, whichever way you're facing.
I think, you know, we do have a policy on how addresses are established. We don't have it off the top of our head, but we'll get it to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
And Wayne and I would be happy to talk with you like we have in the past.
Yeah. Also, what is the processing, $5,000 engineering? I understand the recording fee, but what's the 5,000 engineering?
That's not my, that's one of your views.
Isn't that the cost to develop the plans for this? I thought it was 5,000.
I don't remember the figure.
It says engineering.
It says, it says processing, 5,000 engineering, $150 recording fee.
Is it for the plan, attached plan? That's what I, that's what I have.
I'm just trying to look at the backup material here.
Because the plan's prepared for the town of Mashpee by Cape and Island Engineering.
Yeah, $5,000 for the engineering and 150 bucks for the recording.
Yeah. It does say prepared by Cape and Island, it's an engineer.
Engineering of the road.
It's the town's, Meredith, it's the town's cost of developing the engineering plans.
I'm sorry?
It's the town's cost to provide, of developing the engineering plan, the road layout plan. That's what the 5,000.
The road layout?
That's what the $5,000 is.
So would that, would that include conservation?
No.
So there's nothing in here for conservation and all the things that need to be replaced?
There is in the, the actual construction estimate that was prepared. There is an engineering and permitting estimate that would be used to develop the actual permit plans, since we are abutting a wetland, so we would have to file with conservation. So that is included in the, the construction estimate.
So that's including in the 211,000?
Correct.
On that, so it just seems extremely high. I was guesstimating between 15 and $20,000. I was off, way off on that. I understand the asphalt's gone up 40, $40 a ton. I understand, you know, the cost of everything, but I just, I just think it's really $28,000 is for eight people on that street. I mean.
Well, the purpose of this stage of the process is to give you all fair notice of what it might cost, and then we can decide, you can decide whether you want to proceed or not.
Yeah, I totally understand, but I will go back and to the letter. I know of one family that did not receive a letter.
Some people choose not to pick up certified mail for reasons of their own.
Would Russ and Sue like to address that?
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Anyway, we said.
No, no, I know, but I'm just saying, because I have been passing out copies of my letter to people who didn't get it.
Yeah.
So that's whether it's, you know, registered or not.
Yeah.
All right. No, that's all I have, so.
Thank you, Meredith. Does anyone else have a comment? Yes.
If I may, I am who she referred to at the corner lot of Oneida and Canonshead. The letter was actually made to 20 Oneida Ave. That's what it was mailed to. That's where I went and picked it up. But I'm being included in the assessment for the Canonshead, whatever, the paving. So my biggest concern is, where am I? Am I Canonshead or Oneida? And will I get, if they want to go with Oneida at some point, am I going to hit with both of them? Now, initially, in the very beginning, the lot was named on Canonshead 35 years ago, but it was changed to Oneida and has been Oneida for 35 years. And that is where my front door is, but as Meredith stated, my driveway is on Canonshead. So that's one of my concerns, and I'm not sure how to follow up with that.
We'll get all this clarified tomorrow, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to bring that up, but thank you very much.
If you could just maybe give your number, name and number to Wayne, we could get in touch with you tomorrow. Anyone else have any other comments on this one? All right.
A motion to close the public hearing?
All right. Motion made to close the public hearing. Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. We don't have to take any action at this point. The ball is in the court of the residents, whether you want to proceed with this. We need a petition signed by five of the eight, Monday, July 11th. If it doesn't come in then, it can go to the spring, but to catch the.
It won't make October.
It won't make October. And at some point, the cost estimate, once the cost estimate goes stale, Catherine?
It's good for a year. After that, the price will go up.
Okay. So you have fall and the spring of next year. Otherwise, you can assume the price will continue to go up. All right. We're at 6:40, public hearing, continuation of our March 21st, 2022 hearing on the proposed shellfish regulations. Do you want to open this? Do you want natural resources to pick this up? Where do we want to start? So I think last time, this was before us, there was a question and an attempt to clarify language around respect for Aboriginal hunting and fishing rights as they apply to the shellfish. We're not quite there yet, I think it's fair to say.
Right. I just want to make sure all of the board is aware that we did receive a letter from the tribe this afternoon. You should all have a copy of it. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read it, but that's obviously relevant to the item before you. I know that the Shellfish Commission Chair wanted an opportunity to speak, and I know that the Vice President of the Tribe wanted an opportunity to speak, and beyond that, there may be others, but I know that those folks wanted to speak.
Okay. Well, we'll give you a chance to have your hearing. So, Mr. Thomas?
Want to open up the hearing?
Oh, you do.
It's already open. Reopen the hearing. We have to reread the notice. Whichever you're more comfortable with.
Thanks. Good evening. Thank you once again for the opportunity to come before you. Last week, you received a copy of our draft, 2022 Town and Mashpee Shellfish Regulations. Those regulations have been vetted over the course of almost two years, with a lot of back and forth. A lot of important items are in that regarding public health, aquaculture, many different things that need to be moved in an efficient manner for the town. As I said at our last meeting, we had been meeting for almost two years off and on with COVID. We came up with a set of draft regulations. We came to you back in March. We wanted to have the timeline meet the approval of the regulations to go out with the brand-new licenses, to literally kill two birds with one stone, and we were under a tight window, when unable to accomplish that. At our last public hearing, as you know, I was a little disappointed that a couple hours ahead of time, we were made aware that there was some language that the tribe would like inserted, and that's their right. I will remind everyone that we have had a tribal liaison on the Shellfish Commission for as long as I can remember, very active participants, great knowledge, and quite frankly, I know buddies taught me a lot. Having said all that, the purpose of liaison is to transmit information back and forth, although it's not our responsibility. I would make the assumption that that information had been passed back and forth, and there was more than ample time to vet this or sit down with us and perhaps talk about the language, but we had not heard any. That's why I was extremely disappointed at the 11th hour that the language was submitted and we had to postpone the hearing. That's okay. We were waiting for the tribe to propose some language. I understand the language did come in. Ironically, it was the day, or the day of, the night of our commission meeting, when, again, I was handed something last minute, unaware of what the language was, and naturally, we had some questions. We're not saying we agree or disagree. We have some questions. Can somebody answer them? And we'll make a vote accordingly. There was nobody in attendance at our meeting that could answer our questions adequately. So we felt in the best interest of the commission, until such time as we could have some clarification, we're going to maintain that we do not adopt that language until we can get better educated and make an informed decision. It's our responsibility to be clear and concise what the rules and regulations state and respect the tribe's Aboriginal rights. That's a priority for us, always has been, always will be, and we are ready to move on these, on these regulations. There was some language that they provided that I thought was, again, had a lot of questions. So it was recommended, why don't we sit down with the tribal conservation, Natural Resources Commission? Great opportunity to sit down and please educate us on what the issues are. Again, we're not in disagreement. Help us out. We scheduled a meeting last Wednesday at the Mashpee Public Library. An invitation was sent out to the tribal natural resources. The meeting was confirmed. They even asked if they could have their lawyer present, either by Zoom or speakerphone. Sure, you can have, that's your right. You can have whoever you want. Personally, as an aside, it was an open meeting, but I was kind of hoping it would be a meeting with no selectmen, no lawyers, and be a chance for us and the tribe to sit down and understand where each side is coming from, so we could move on this. A little over 24 hours away from the meeting, we received an email from the Natural Resources Division that the tribal vice president is, and I quote, "The language clearly states our Aboriginal rights, as determined by the federal government and the courts, and therefore, no other discussions are needed." So apparently, the line of communications is shut off. We were really hoping to get educated that night. Having received that cancellation, we thought it was best that we continue our meeting. It was an open meeting, public. We had no idea who would be there and not, and maybe the tribe would show up. We weren't sure. No, I believe there was one individual from the tribe that attended the public meeting, and we appreciate that, but having no answers to our questions, we felt that we should stick by our vote until such time we can get clarification. This is a big deal, and why is it a big deal? Is because I believe the language that's being presented is precedent-setting for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I don't believe through our research that this language exists anywhere else in the Commonwealth. If it does, please correct me. I will also tell you that we have very specific language respecting the tribe's Aboriginal rights, and I quote, under the permit conditions on page six. I won't read the whole paragraph, but it gets to the point, "including Native Americans with valid tribal identification cards who assert Aboriginal rights to harvest for sustenance purposes." Period. We agree with the tribe, the Shellfish Warden, the Natural Resources Officers, the Selectmen, okay? It's not their decision to decide what sustenance is. I can't tell a tribal member what sustenance means. It's different to them. I respect that, okay? I think that language is very, in my opinion, it's clear. It honors your rights. We're not disrespecting anybody. And upon further investigation, I looked at five other towns on the Cape. No other town on the Cape has any language regarding the tribe and this stuff. So I think that's pretty great that Mashpee, you know, this is their home, and we respect that. And I know there's been a lot of agreements. The town has come a long way with the tribe. There's no disrespect. There's not one anti-tribe person on our commission. We are pro-Mashpee, 110%. If there wasn't a respect, there wouldn't be any language. It could be like every other town, but we have a great relationship. We have very few problems, if any, in Mashpee, and that's why we support that language that we have. That's our draft. The question regarding the language that was provided by the, by Mr. Hendricks, several questions. Again, we believe it to be precedent-setting for the Commonwealth, and again, if it is, it is, but I wouldn't feel good putting my name on it on behalf of the commission to the Town of Mashpee, putting something that's precedent-setting that we don't know where it's going to go. I don't know that. I'm not a lawyer. Again, please educate us so we can make a decision. The language being asked to be put in the document, "Nothing set forth in this chapter or regulations shall extend to deprive the free exercise of ancient and Aboriginal fishing, harvesting, foraging, hunting, and gathering, and trapping rights exercised by members of federally recognized Indian tribes." Now, the email from Mr. Hendricks would indicate that the federal government has uniquely described what Aboriginal rights are and all those different things. We read it. We read it, and this is why we want to be educated. It sounds like on the surface that this language says that any federally recognized tribal member in the continental United States can come fish here. I'm not saying I'm against that or for it, but somebody needs to understand why we would ask those questions. Does it mean that, again, you want to go fishing, go fishing? But I want to make sure that the tribe understood that that's how we looked at it, that there could be individuals coming to our town, maybe not know our rules and regulations, not know what's open, what's closed, what's contaminated. Does sustenance mean they can go into recreational area and dig what they want? Again, I don't understand the language. That's why I want to know. Does it mean they can go on someone's grant and take shellfish? Does it mean they can go on a propagation set up by the town to enhance our shellfish program? My guess is the answer is no to all of that, but the unwillingness to sit down and ask the question, answer the questions, has led us to this point.
Just want to point out to the chair that Town Council is trying to get in.
Oh. Pick up conference?
Just concert, conference.
Pat?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. That's all. Didn't mean to interrupt.
So here we are tonight. Our stamp is on it. We believe these rules and regulations, respect everyone in town. We're not lawyers, but we're doing the best we can. This language has been in this for quite a while. Our existing ones have language about the tribal individuals and their rights. This new one has them. Nobody's denying anything to anybody, but the last meeting, two months ago, the 11th hour, it was postponed. We had a meeting scheduled last week. The meeting was postponed. Negotiations and compromise happen when you communicate. You don't communicate, there's no compromise, there's no negotiations. We are not adversarial. We want to sit down and have a coffee, a cup of coffee, if it takes five minutes or it takes five hours. We're willing to make that commitment, and yet, here we are again, a third time, we're being asked to put this to the side and wait another two months to meet. What's going to be said in July that can't be, couldn't be said at the library the other night? We want to move this forward. This very important document talks about wet storage, public health concerns, aquacultural rules and regulations, that we need to get compliant with the state. It's taken a long time to get there, okay? State grant stuff, also aquaculture stuff applies some areas to the tribe as well, so it's not just about contaminated water. There are other things in here, albeit kind of mild, that do apply to the tribe, but again, I'm not the expert. I'm going by what we've gathered collectively from our meetings and our inability to sit down with the tribe. Said it last month, two months ago, I'll say it again. We enjoy working with the tribe. We have a great relationship. We want to continue. You tell us when you want to sit down and when you want to get these questions answered for us. Five minutes or five hours? We're willing to make the commitment. These are very important. We're running behind, and quite frankly, I think they need to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll take any questions if anybody.
Chair?
Mr. Whedon.
I just want to have a point of clarity. You know, Buddy Pocknett serves on the, on your board as a, as an appointed person by this board. He is not a tribal liaison. The tribal council did not appoint him as a liaison. He's a non-voting member as an alternate member of the group. You know, I've heard you come in and state a couple of times that, you know, you have a tribal liaison, and I just want to clarify that that's not the case, because he's a non-voting, appointed, alternate member of the board.
Okay. So if I can back up, he would, he's an associate member. I'm assuming that the reason that he would be attending, like Sean Hendricks did, like Marcus Hendricks did, is that you would obtain information in the meetings and bring it back to the tribe. I'm not saying he's the authority, but a liaison or a representative, I think, attending the meetings would bring the information back. That's all, how I meant that, Mr. Whedon. But I do have one very important question on this language, and I'd like a yes or no answer. Is this language being presented by Mr. Hendricks, has it been formally voted on by the tribal council, approved, and he was instructed to insert this language? Did this come as a formal vote of the tribal council? I'm curious, procedurally?
I can't speak to what's been done as far as that language coming before the various respective bodies. I'm not directly involved with the Natural Resource Commission, so when you refer to the Natural Resources Program, there's the commission, there's the department, and then this tribal council. Each one are separate, distinct bodies. The Shellfish Commission has been meeting regularly to work on this. As far as the language, it is my understanding that the state and the town, the municipality and the state lack the jurisdictional authority to, inherent Aboriginal rights are not, they're non-negotiable. They're protected by federal laws and the state, their use of rights because they're ratified through treaties. And so, you know, these date back to colonial periods and with relationship with the King of England and everything else. So, you know, on that note, the town lacks the jurisdictional authority to impede upon those rights. So, you know, that's where I think the reluctance is to negotiate. It's not something that needs to come to the table and negotiate what those rights are. You know, you have some questions that I think can be ironed out and do require additional conversation, but as far as anything around the rights and what they are. conversation, but as far as anything around the rights and what they are, I don't think that's exactly what needs to be discussed.
So, can I ask you a clarifying question, David?
Sure.
So with that approach in mind, the town then would be neither able to constrain nor grant. It's really of rights. They stem from higher authority, if you will.
Correct.
Right? So question would be, and I understand what you're saying about negotiating things that we don't necessarily have authority. I think it's really a question of understanding how things will apply and how maintenance with, you know, public health-related constraints around contamination and the like, you know, making sure the town staff and the regs understand that and contemplate that, and that we have an understanding moving forward of how that's going to work, not necessarily negotiate. I think the term negotiation, I understand to be kind of a hot button. And if we're, if we were talking about having a better understanding of how the relationship's going to work and where the boundaries are and where they aren't, so that everybody's protected, that's a different conversation, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. You know, I just have to say that, you know, we've been here for, since time immemorial, so our people have been doing this for thousands of years. Over the past 400 years, prior to the formation of the federal government and, you know, the incorporation of the town in 1870, you know, everything was plentiful and bountiful here, and it's supported our way of life for those thousands of years. And now, you know, let me put it to you like this. If somebody was to break into your home and tell you you can't live this way that you've been living, and all of a sudden they impose things upon you that you're, you know, you're unaccustomed to, then, you know, you can understand the sense of why that's unacceptable when you've been doing it for, generationally, for thousands of years. It's the way in which we live. Each tribe is respective to their area and has a relationship. There's a cultural component there that, there's a connection. And so, you know, with that, over the past 200 years, if we've seen nothing else, that the current laws and regulations that come down from state and municipalities have failed in protecting the environment, the water quality, the shellfish, they don't even survive unless we propagate. So, you know, with that, you know, there's a reluctance to see that your way is the right way. And so, you know, our folks want to be able to go down and fish and practice their Aboriginal rights that are inherent. They were given to us by the Creator. That's who has the authority to grant them, is the Creator, and no one else. So, you know, and the federal law has recognized those things, you know. So I just want to, you know, speak to the hesitation in negotiating those things and put it in perspective from our point of view. There's various realities in this country, and from our perspective, you know, laws have been written for us. They're not written by us.
Understood.
In most instances.
So, I wanted to give Mr. Hendricks an opportunity. Carol or Tom, do you have anything you want to ask of Mr. Thomas?
No.
You're good? Peter, thank you.
Just closing real quick. I respect what you say, and I appreciate what you just said. There's not an ounce of contention from us of the commission. You deserve it. You earned it. Nobody's taking anything away. I don't see, we don't see any prohibitive language in there. But again, I just learned more in the last two minutes than I've learned in the last three months. So I appreciate that. This is out of respect. We want to make sure that you have all of your rights. Nobody's taking that away. Nobody.
I think there are conversations to be had.
And again, maybe negotiation was the wrong word. Maybe I chose the wrong word, okay? Maybe it's compromise, and maybe to find out what's...
I think it's achieving a more thorough understanding on both parties' part, how it can play out to everyone's best advantage.
Understanding is the choice word.
Maybe information and education.
Yeah. So, thank you. We're going to try and keep working through this. I want to give Mr. Hendricks an opportunity to address the board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. I appreciate your efforts on this. Mr. Hendricks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, President, Select Board. My name's Carlton Hendricks, 12 Somerset Road. I'm also privileged to be the vice chairman of the Mashpee Wapinaw tribe. I'm also the liaison to the Natural Resource Commission. I just wrote a couple of PowerPoints, but just to address a couple of things, the language proposed was not voted on by tribal council. It was voted on by Natural Resource Commission. It was supported language that our legal rolled up and gave to the towns legal. When we left the meeting last time in March, there was a line of communication that just wasn't hitting. So instead of using Buddy as the go-through, it was from the Natural Resource Director to the towns' natural resource to end all the in-between. Seeing that still didn't work, because we still now are here without having our proposed language implemented into these shellfish regulations. We have a joint meeting together July 18th. I'll just be very clear that we are asking this board to hold off until that meeting, until we can meet board to board to discuss and really what they consider talk about or discuss what these reasons are. I'll also say that when he says we're reluctant, the Natural Resource Commission, who I support and I'm the liaison to, we view these meetings and continuously asking to joint, talk about, discuss, negotiate, deal. We view that as impeding on our Aboriginal rights, and it is something that we're just, quite honestly, not going to tolerate. We have tribal members that are being harassed on a daily basis, civil infractions, criminal infractions, and the tribes have to spend resources to defend these, which are Aboriginal rights that would, it's federal law. It's not, and I see Peter's, maybe the lack of not having legal when they're discussing these issues is a problem, because our rights are, it's federal law. These regulations without our proposed language is in violation of federal law, and it's just, it's clear. We don't have shellfish limits. We don't have limits. There's no limit. We don't have limits. We don't have certain methods on how we shellfish. These are all languages and things that are put in these regulations. We had our legal ask for inputting and implementing the language that not only recognized but respected our Aboriginal rights. The Shellfish Commission chose to not put them in. We go on the hallway after the last meeting, they was very clear, oh, nothing in these regulations affects the tribe. We know it doesn't. But why not implement the language to show that? We asked for three places to implement it, beginning, middle, and end, to be very clear when we're not here anymore, that these regulations do not affect, they do not encounter us. It's not for us for these regulations. And I'm just going to, you know, we, we, we're asking that you table this. If you choose not to and you choose to take the regulations without the language implemented, we just have no choice as a tribe. But we do plan on supporting and defending any tribal member that is found in violation of these regulations that are against federal law. We are prepared to defend and represent any tribal citizen if this passes without our language. And just in closing, as I told Rodney Collins, that Mashpee has a chance to really take the lead on this, on recognizing and respecting our rights, and did a great job with the town seal, that our chairman had a great part in changing that, and that is kind of a representation that Mashpee's still here, we're still here. But we're not, it's not done with the town seal. It's not, it's not done. We're there, okay, we're done. These Aboriginal rights are at the top priority of this tribe. It's at the top of our priority list. You have the chance of being the lead on all these other towns and municipalities. You hear what he said, there's five other towns that don't even have the language that even recognizes it or respecting it. Mashpee has the chance to take the lead and be the lead on how these municipalities and states recognize and respect us, and we're hoping that this board chooses to put this off until July 18th, until we can have this joint meeting, government to government, and really understand where we're both coming from and where we want to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Any questions for Mr. Hendricks?
No. I have a question for you, though.
Sure.
Would it be sensible enough to have two liaisons from our board with two liaisons from their board to work it out before we have the joint meeting?
And that, I think that...
So the language...
Yeah, I mean, what I've, I think that's a good idea, Carol. I think that there's, what I'm hearing, Shellfish Commission wants to be the lead. Tribe wants us to be the lead on this issue. The spirit of intent is pretty clear, and I think this board supports not just sort of shrug your shoulders, get out of the way, but really doing something that has some meaning. I don't think we understand one another well enough yet to figure out exactly what the right language is to achieve that outcome. So, got your letter. Mr. Chairman's here, asking us to wait till the meeting. We had to reschedule. It was going to be unfortunate we couldn't be last Monday. Maybe we would have resolved this. But what if, picking up where Carol left off, what if, and I think that, I think we're asking the Shellfish Commission to carry forward a major policy initiative that goes well beyond the Shellfish Commission, and I think as a matter of policy and legal implications, probably better resides your regs or your regs. But coming to some resolution of this and understanding the opportunities that it presents for other relationship opportunities between ourselves and the tribe, that it's an executive function. And I think we ought to give ourselves a crack at figuring this out. I'm not sure I really want to wait until July. Could we, and this is a question to the chair and the vice chair, would you be willing, between now and our next meeting, which is June 6th?
June 6th.
Two weeks from now, convene a small working group at the senior levels, maybe the board liaisons, members of our Natural Resources Department, your Natural Resources Department, and let's see if through a couple of, either face-to-face or Zoom meetings, we can figure this out. Come back on June 6th if we can figure it out. I think that there's a sense of urgency from the Shellfish Commission, Natural Resources. There are real issues at hand that are separate from tribal relations that would improve shellfish management in the town, protect public health. I think we all agree we want to do that. See if we can take a crack at doing this before the June 6th meeting, see if we can resolve language with everybody involved participating in the conversation. If this board and you, and you as the leadership representative, willing to do that, can we give that a try?
Yeah, the tribe agrees.
Okay.
To work it out.
So, is it amenable to the board that, right now, you know, John and I are the two tribal liaisons. We could do that. We could pick somebody else from the board, whatever people's pleasure are, bring in staff as we need it, and let's get, let's have a couple of meetings over the next two weeks and see if we can get this done. Peter, does that work for you?
100%.
Rodney?
Yes, sir. And the only other thing I just want to mention in fairness to Mr. Hendricks, the only question that I had when we were having a very congenial conversation was the contaminated waters, and he said that there is a resolution to address that, and he's absolutely correct, and he produced a resolution that the tribe passed.
Okay, I just think we need to talk a little...
And you have that in your pack.
Yeah, I just think we need to talk a little. I haven't heard anything that doesn't sound formidable here, but we're not quite there yet. And I think, again, I think we, Shellfish Commission brought these issues to the fore, but they're bigger than shellfish, and I think we need to jump in and figure out how to deal with it and cement the relationship in a positive way. I think this is what we were talking about, about concrete steps that we can take to work together, not just platitudes. This strikes me as the first one out of the gate. Yes, sir. Do you want to, do you mind coming up to the mic so that people at home can hear you?
I think I'll skip.
Okay. All right. So, I don't think we need, can we just get a vote to continue the public hearing to June 6th?
I make a motion to continue the public hearing to June 6th.
Second motion.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chair will be in touch tomorrow.
Thank you.
And Mr. Vice Chair, thank you both. Thank you, everyone who's got an interest in this. I think we can get this done. Great. Thanks, everybody. All right. Let me give it a second. If people want to, people are leaving, we'll give this room a second to clear.
You don't need him anymore.
Pat, we're going to let you go.
I don't need any thanks.
Thank you. All right, our next appointment is discussion and approval of the order of taking for Oldham Circle. With that, I'll recognize DPW Director Loren.
So, the road conversion was approved at the Maytown meeting, so this is basically your board acting on that action.
So, the order of taking, this one's $55,004, 1525 for the seven property owners. That's a big one, but this is the last step in an approved town meeting. So, it's a complicated road. The wall, I'm sure, adds a lot of money to the cost of this thing. So is there a motion to approve and execute the order of taking for Oldham Circle?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Do we reference the attached...
I don't think we have to. All right, next is a discussion with the finance team, Don Fair, Treasurer Collector May, and I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Gibbons, the new assessing director. So who's going to speak for the team? Welcome to Mashpee, Mr. Gibbons.
Welcome. I'm happy to be here.
I hope you say so at the end of this discussion.
I hope you do, too.
I've heard good things. I'm sure I will. So who's leading off?
He's going to speak. I'm just here.
I figure we're going to be easy on the new guy, huh?
No, I don't think so.
Mr. Gibbons.
My predecessor did a lot of work, and I'd be remiss if I did not give kudos to him for preparing a lot of documentation. I came in here pretty much at the 11th hour with regard to the residential exemption. I'm happy to be here, but this whole folder was left, and I inherited this. So I don't purport to take credit for, you know, a lot of the work that was done in research. I came in, I have been solely focused in my three weeks here on researching this residential exemption, speaking with my brother and sister assessors throughout the state in the 16 communities that have adopted this exemption. I've put together, in the packet, I put together a letter. It has a May 3rd date on it and an application. And then I included the third page. That would not be mailed to taxpayers. That's just some salient strengths and weaknesses, for lack of a better term, on the residential There were two strengths, and we had 10 weaknesses when we put this together. I feel like the job of an assessor is very difficult. We take an oath to be fair and equitable, and this 59-5C law is a difficult one. It's problematic in that the, there's an increased demand for, an increased workload for my department, the tax office, and even the Board of Selectmen's Office, because if an aggrieved taxpayer contacts us and says, well, where did this come from? Where did this come from? Well, it's the selectmen that have the five votes on this. It's not the assessors. The Board of Assessors historically in Mashpee, and you know better than me, I've only been here three weeks, but I do know that the current board and the prior boards are not in favor of this. They do, however, if enacted, they would recommend a residential exemption of no more than 20% if it is adopted. than 20% if it is adopted. And that currently, that currently, based on FY '22 values, would be roughly $870 for the average taxpayer. And when I say the average taxpayer, I mean the average assessed value, which as of FY '22 was in the mid $500,000, I believe it was $540,000. So, that taxpayer, if they were here year-round, would save $870.
And a 20% was the break-even point, which flips?
The break-even point was a little under $1,001,000. With the 20% exemption, it would be $1,068,000 would be the break-even point. You know, so, somebody who's assessed at a year-round resident, assessed at $800,000, save about 300 bucks per year. And once again, these are all based on fiscal year 22 values, because we're still working on the 23 values. But as we know, we're seeing in residential markets, double-digit increases the last few years in property values. So that break-even point probably would, you know-
So what in fact is the proposal? The proposal is to send this letter, or a version of this letter, and this worksheet out to every property owner to assess, pardon the words of the word, to evaluate how many people might take it. You up on it?
Correct. And our estimate with the 20% exemption would be 6,200-
Our estimate?
Would be 6,288 people. But we feel it would be best to mail the entire, the two-page packet with the application to every taxpayer, so they would be aware of what's going on.
Okay, question on, for income verif, or for residence verification, why are you asking for the 2020 taxes and not 21? Why not the current year?
Let me see what I came up with. On my form, it says 2021.
Ours says 20.
Ours says 20.
Yeah, well, it's been updated since that.
Been updated. Okay.
At least you're reading.
I always read. Questions from the board?
I think this needs to be looked at, so you can be satisfied.
My question is the, on number 10, if accepted, increased workload and additional employees required to adequately administer the process, would they be temporary employees just to get things implemented?
Very good question. The majority of the work would be front-loaded, so we would need temporary, some temporary help in order to get it up and going the first year. After that, I think you're looking at, you know, a third to a half-time person. I spoke with Barnstable, they have at least one person who completely dedicates themselves year-round to the residential exemption.
But they're about three times our size, right?
Correct. So, yes, so if you used your math, we'd need someone, you know, 35% of the time.
You don't want to hear a while, you learn, oh, I like to use my math. Right, Don?
That's right.
Okay.
It could be, it could be a 19-hour, a week employee.
Nineteen.
But there'll be a bump this fiscal year, this next fiscal year, and then presumably it would go down.
If it's a-
I'm just saying possibly.
Yeah. So, a lot of no issue with the latter, obviously the 21's good. I do have some concerns about the characterization on the strengths and weaknesses. From a financial manager's point of view, from the finance team, number one seems the key to me, which is, it's net revenue neutral to the town. You're collective, you're getting this, we, the town, you, Collector, collecting the same amount of dollars from the tax base. Beyond that-
No change.
Beyond that, I think that there's a lot of subjectivity to these points of weakness that kind of indicative to an underlying hostility to the idea, that I don't think necessarily something, it's policy matter, not an operations matter. You know, yes, commercial industrial purchase of property will have a lower rate than residential, but it'll be taxed at full value, not the reduced value that the residential takes. So, sure, the rates will be different, but the tax bills are gonna be different, and the qualifying residents are gonna achieve a benefit of a lower tax bill. I think that stated the way it is, it puts a thumb on the scale. I think that the idea that, I'd like to know which year-round residents, who would lose exemptions? Which specific exemptions would be lost under this scenario?
If you had a veteran getting a 22E, and they had a lower-valued property, they can't play, they can't pay less than 10%.
So, but they may lose an exemption, but still have a lower overall tax bill as a result of the implementation of the residential exemption, right? So why not say that?
But they have a lower tax bill, but what they owe, somebody else pays.
Understood, but the implication of this is that somebody who currently has an exemption is gonna lose the exemption and therefore end up with a higher tax bill than they will with the residential exemption. It's just, it doesn't say it, but it leads you to the conclusion that they're worse off because they lost an exemption. If you lose an exemption and it gets replaced with one that's of higher dollar value to you personally, that's a good thing for you, but this is characterized as a negative.
Is there another case? Okay, one case is a veteran. Is there another case?
Well, there may be more than one, I was just giving the example.
Okay.
I'm just saying, the way it's phrased, it leads, it's a negative, because it says it's a weakness, when in fact it may be to the benefit of the person getting senior citizen exemption, a work-off exemption, a veteran's exemption, they may be better off in this instance. So, I think to list it that way, without having something that says people with exemptions might get a higher-value reduction in their tax bill, if you wanted to be fair about it. I don't know that it creates an adversary relationship between year-round residents and seasonal.
It does. I had some letters a couple of months ago when we first, in November, when we first started talking about it. There's a street where half the street is residential and the other half is summer people.
Right.
And they were saying that they don't want this to happen.
I get they don't, but by the same token, a lot of those people, or some people, they're playing the tax game to their benefit, and this is not their primary domicile because they've declared full-time residents in Florida or another place with no state income tax. So that, so to do that and not be contributing to Commonwealth coffers and then claim it's not fair if you turn around the tax game and play it to my disadvantage because I've been yielding benefit from lower taxes and lower state taxes by moving myself down to Florida, I'm a little less sympathetic to that. You know, you die by the tax code sword, you live by the tax code sword. So that door can swing both ways, so-
Yes, it can.
You know, and I know, you know, Barnstable, Provincetown, Wellfleet, I don't see any civil wars in those towns between residents and non-residents, and they've got these, you know, Wellfleet just up theirs from 20 to 35% in one year, because they, it went so smoothly there. I don't, you know, so, sure, some people are gonna say it, but as a cultural divide within the communities-
I don't think it would be a cultural divide.
Well, it's talked about, it talks about an adversary relationship, like it's a Hatfield-McCoys kind of thing. I just think, you know, if you have a potential overlay deficit, I mean, for the first year you're doing this, what if we put more money in overlay reserve, and if you don't, to cover that, so you can set your tax rate, and if you don't spend it, it goes back into free cash in a subsequent year, or you do less overlay reserve, it's all fungible. So it strikes me as a straw man that you're setting up.
Yeah, but it raises the tax rate, so, in that first year. So, if, at 5%, we're gonna have to raise 300, almost $300,000 extra in an overlay that we normally put 400 in.
Okay.
Okay, that's a decent amount of money. That's gonna raise the tax rate the first year.
Okay, but $300,000 on a $64 million operating budget's de minimis. Sure, it'll go up, but it's, you know, you show me if anybody's gonna notice the impact of that $300,000.
Andrew, I'm just stating the facts, so that, so that down the line, okay, I'm not a policymaker. I'm not here to set policy. I looked at this very analytically.
I guess, well, I understand that, and I appreciate that, and I don't mean to give you a hard time over it, but I think that it's more useful to say, these are some of the implications, and to address that, you may need to raise your overlay reserve for one year by a little bit.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's just one year. What people don't understand is, when you up the ante on non-domiciliary people, okay, a lot of those people have a lot of means. I've been in other communities, okay? They start filing appeals. We gotta, we gotta defend it at the ATB. They're gonna fight these for sport, okay? I've been in other communities, and these people have means. And I'm just laying it out there, that when you start doing this and start upping the ante and go in and then decide a couple of years down the line to raise it to 30% and all this, it creates a lot of extra burden on the community and the assessor's office, as long as you're prepared for that. And when we come back and we need more budgetary items, we need more ATB money to defend these cases, as long as you're behind that-
That's fine, I would suggest-
Then fine.
That's a perfectly rational argument to make. It reads better to me to say, there are implications to this, we would need to be resourced to defend the town's position, as opposed to saying it's a reason not to do it.
Yeah.
Which is how it reads now.
But I'm an assessor, not a Philadelphia lawyer, okay? And I'm not, I'm not an author, okay? If something needs to be massaged a little bit-
I'm just reacting to what's-
I'm flexible, it can be, but I think you're reading a lot into what was written in.
This has been a long conversation that predates your tenure, so you're catching a little bit of that through this. So I'd like to, I think it'd be more useful as a piece to revise this a little bit. I don't know where this goes, where this lives, or maybe it's just a piece of paper that goes into the trash can after tonight's conversation.
I don't think, I think he's just, he just categorized the weaknesses, Andrew. I don't think we have to go down each weakness here to see what is proper to say. I mean, we know the strengths and we know some of the weaknesses, what they are, and we've asked for him to come in and give us his, and he has.
Fair enough, I think that-
And if you want to send this out, and we can, and see how it goes and how it comes back.
I think if we're headed, if there's a majority view on the board that we're headed in a certain direction, how our, if that's where we're going, how our staff talks about it will help shape how people feel about it. And so, you know, it's important to get the heads up, but it's also important what language we use when we talk to the public-
Yes.
-to say, hey, we told them there were 10 lousy reasons not to do this, and they did it anyway. I don't really feel like living through that.
Wow.
Well, and-
Go ahead, Dave.
You know, for me, I was kind of shocked to see it weighed so heavily towards the weaknesses myself. You know, to say that we can only, we struggle to only come up with two benefits, you know, is a little disappointing, and, you know, if this letter's going to go out to people, I think people do weigh in heavily the town's, you know, thoughts on this. At the end of the day, I think, you know, for somebody paying for, struggling to pay a $540,000 mortgage, $800 is a lot of money over the course of a year at the end of the day. And if we can help our town people, you know, we're, my goal in this is to, you know, with all the wastewater infrastructure coming and everything else, their taxes and their, money's gonna go up, the cost of living. So if we can give any kind of relief now to offset some of that later, that's coming, we know is coming down the road, then let's take the measures to do that, so that at the end of the day, even if it's a net, net zero, you know, on the difference, then, okay, great, you know, we did what we had to, to try and soften the impact for them. That's my hopes out of this.
Well, that's number two. I mean, and if you had any, you know, any additional strengths, I'd love to put them down there. I'd love to put them down there. But can you come, I mean, if you come up with something, let me know, and I'll consider it and put it on there, but I couldn't come up with anything else.
Well, to the point Andrew made around the tax exemption, you know, you could, if you worded it a little differently, then, you know, you could come up better, your tax, tax relief, you could have a little bit of tax relief, even though you're giving up the exemption. I mean, if that's reworded, that's a benefit.
Well, if you wanted to reword number two, I mean, let me know. I got right to the point there, year-round residents with modest properties will have a lower tax bill. That's a very strong-
Yeah, I mean, I think people also need to understand, everybody thinks they're average, right? But the reality is that, I believe from the last year's assessor's analysis, when they were looking at the 35%, and now having seen, now having had the benefit of seeing your 20% run, 85% to 90% of the year-round residences were below the break-even point. So, you know, there's a real separation. There are two Mashpee economic realities in this town. There's the year-round population and there's the seasonal population. The seasonal population drives the upper end, drives the average up, and the reality is, most of the year-round population lives below that break-even, with properties that are moderately highly valued, that most, that a lot of people would, elsewhere in the state, elsewhere in the country, would happily take a home valued at what our homes are valued. But they're well below the point where they would continue to gain significant advantage. I would also suggest in terms of an advantage to this, is that the lower value the property is, which is a surrogate, if you will, imperfect one for wealth, the higher the benefit. So there's a substantial number of residences that sit below that average point.
How many percentage, Andrew?
Again, you know, not having the run of, the latest run of the numbers, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's significant. And people don't really realize where they are because values are changing rapidly, they don't have a good feel. I don't know, what's your house value? I don't know what mine is, to the $100,000 point, most people don't. So, I just think that, you know, promoting this as a way to provide higher levels of support and benefit to people with lower-value properties, which is an imprecise but not wholly inaccurate measure of wealth, is a promotion to this that's significant. And the people, you know, if you have a second home, by definition, you have more wealth than someone with a first home, and so the burden falls there. So there's plenty of other ways to argue the benefits that would make it a little bit more balanced picture, and I'd be happy to suggest some language.
You know-
Tom?
The, I'm all for trying to reduce the taxes for people in need, people that are having a hard time, but I don't feel as though, at this point, I don't feel as though I'm fully aware as to how this is going to work. And I think we need to have some more time to digest what we've just been reading and listening to in conversation. Sometimes there are things that come up when you're having a conversation, and I'm sitting there, and I never thought of some of those, these issues. And I'd rather just take a step back, have a little further conversation on this plan.
Well, we could have a special meeting with Board of Assessors just to talk through how this might play out.
Yeah.
And really get the data, because you're referencing data, we have, you know, the last thing we saw was last year's rate-setting discussion, which was a little different. You're obviously revaluing, and it's a different recommendation.
Yeah, but these, I'm giving you the same numbers that was proposed at the classification hearing last year. I'm working on 23, but for instance, of the year-round full-time residents, about 3,500, about half, 3,500 of, almost 6,500, two years ago, meaning calendar year 20, based on calendar 20 data, were between $300,000 and $500,000 assessed value.
So that's a substantial number-
It is.
-of the percentage of properties in this town.
Yeah, it's about half.
One thing to mention, we have, we've contracted with Munis to get the system upgrade, but I mean, I don't mind a meeting with the Board of Assessors, but Assessor Gibbons and I are planning on sending this out ASAP so that we can get this taken care of- and I are planning on sending this out ASAP so that we can get this taken care of. There's, you know, we don't want to delay, you know, the town meeting adopted to get this, not implemented, because that's your choice, but at least send out letters, get it set so that if you do decide to implement it, we're ready and we don't have the same conversation we've had all, every classification hearing. And if you choose not to implement it, then that's fine, but I'm sure.
No, but I think we can do both. I think we can address Tom's concern. I don't, I don't think they should delay putting out the letter. But we could also, at the same time, have that conversation. And once the letter goes out, that's gonna get people's attention.
Oh, yeah.
They're gonna ask us all questions. We may get a take on this that we hadn't thought of, when, when, not having spoken to people. And that will prepare us better to make a decision at, at the rate-setting hearing in the fall.
It's gonna come quick.
What?
The fall will come quick.
It'll come quick.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion, the possibility, and I know you probably don't want any more meetings, but a workshop because.
Sure.
I know the Board of Assessors voted unanimously, if I'm not mistaken, against. And maybe the board needs to get a perspective of the Board of Assessors. In fairness to the assessor, he's been here three weeks and he's trying to get caught up with Jason's notes. So, you know, go easy on him, please. But.
He told me that before the meeting.
Well, it didn't do any good, but.
It actually did.
At, at any rate, in, in all seriousness, if we could just maybe get a little bit more information, whether it be from the Board of Assessors and then.
So given that this is a letter from the assessors, I don't think, unless, does anybody have an objection to the letter going out? And at the same time, we set something up, you know, sooner rather than later to have a workshop? Cause I think that, you know, we get that package you're referring to, this is given, you know, back in October, early November. I mean, so get, there's a lot of data there. So having the opportunity to walk through it, walk the board through it, talk us through it, would be helpful for us to get your perspective on those numbers fresh.
So you do want a workshop?
Yeah, I think so. And does anybody on the board have an objection to the letter going?
I, I think I, I do have a problem because I think my concern is that, I think we all have to have 100% knowledge of what we're, we're, we're coming across with, so that we can represent ourselves in a manner that would be understandable to the residents that, that we're gonna be dealing with. And that's across the board.
And what the exemptions are.
I, I just assume, I don't want to send the letter and then run out and say, what did you mean by this? I want to be fully aware and be able to communicate with the, with the taxpayers and the residents in, in the town of Mashpee with exactly what we've been presented and why it's being presented and what the effect.
But I think the catch-22 is, in order to have that kind of precision, we need some of the data that the letter generates so that you can do your assessment of how many people are gonna take it up, what's the cost of doing it, what's the workload associated with those numbers, what's the overlay that you need. So, you know, I mean, we did have this conversation back in the fall. We had this conversation again when we set the warrant. It went to town meeting. There was no objection. I understand it's a small sample size, but people had an opportunity to say, hey, timeout. I think if we don't get this going, we're gonna end up with our backs against the wall.
I think we should send out.
Which is where we've been every single time and then we can't do anything.
You're right. You're right. And, and, you know, I mean, if we don't, Joe and I sat with Dawn and we were working the timeline back and, you know, this is a huge, you know, you're talking 60, 300 parcels possibly. And, you know, he's gotta have time to implement all the information into the system and be able to review any questionable data.
Follow up.
If follow-up, if you, if you don't have that time, and I think we set a deadline of, we were thinking end of July?
Yeah.
End of July to have information.
When would this letter go out?
The sooner the better.
And, and you would receive it back by a certain date?
And, and we'd ask for the documents back within about six to eight weeks.
So I mean, we're at May 23rd right now.
Okay.
We're down to the wire. And, you know, I, I see it as informing the process, so it's only gonna help.
So can I ask you the pluses and minuses on this? Have them written, written form so that I could have those and have them available, just so that it's?
That's fair.
I can, I can, I'll move forward with the mailing, but I want to be able to have a, the pluses and minuses and have sheets available so I can hand them out to the individuals in the, within the town.
Agreed. I think we should send out the letter, so it's.
Okay. We can get you that information so you feel like you can respond to people that work.
Yes.
So I think what you're getting is, go ahead, we'll schedule, I'll work with everybody's schedule in the office to try and figure out sooner than later workshop.
A little workshop, but the letter goes.
Single topic, send the letter.
The letter goes, workshop to be pending, correct?
Yeah. And we'll try and have that discussion in June. And maybe the first of a couple. Be like wastewater.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds like a plan.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. You may not seem that fun, glad you're here to work through this with us. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Oh. Greg. I, Greg Fraser, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. I'll, I'll be very brief. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, I like the idea of a workshop because there are lots of misconceptions about this and that can clear up a lot of them. I do want to reiterate to the board that the assessors have not obviously taken a position for the upcoming fiscal year. We do that right before the classification. However, we have had multiple discussions on the rationale behind this and understand that there are some significant expenses coming to taxpayers in the town over the next couple of years. So we understand where it's coming from. So we would welcome the, the workshop. I think it'd be a great idea and get the information out there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right. Our next appointment is Joint Base, Joint Base Cape Cod. The commanders are here to give us our annual briefing. Phil?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Galilei and the rest of the select board. Thanks for having us this evening. I'm Colonel Sean Riley with the 102nd Intelligence Wing, Massachusetts Air National Guard. What are we doing here? Page down. So what is this? Oh, actually it's in a PDF. So General Fo is with us this evening tonight, but you'll hear from.
I apologize.
The rest of the base commanders. All right. So again, the 102nd is 1,240 airmen. And when I say airmen, I, I mean our, our state employees and our civilian federal employees. About 800 of those are drill status military folks that serve in a part-time capacity and over 400 are full-time. And I have some information of how that breaks out around the surrounding towns. So we have three operational missions within the 102nd. Two of them are intel and those airmen are employed, what we say, in place. They work right out there on Joint Base Cape Cod. The first intel unit really focuses on collecting intelligence from US Air Force platforms to help solve complex questions for combat commanders downrange. The second group also focuses on those complex questions, but really deals with cyberspace, which is now a warfighting domain, much like the air, land and sea and space. And they try to get a, a, a non-kinetic option for our military and civilian leaders. And then our 253rd cyber unit, they design and install cyber here in the Conus. They've worked at the White House complex, off at Air Force Base, as well as going into other bases downrange, setting up like a bear base if we had to operate. Got our mission support group, kind of looks a little bit like the town of Mashpee. We've got our, our police, we've got our civil engineer, our roads and grounds and our staff communications, and then our medical folks, general medical unit that kind of keeps us fit to fight, as well as about a 50-person unit that's assigned to FEMA Region 1 in a homeland response. So planned event like the marathon or unplanned event like the 2013 bombing of the marathon, we have those folks along the route. Since I took command of the wing just about two years ago, my priorities have been to really transform the 102nd into a sustainable walking campus. Those intel comm missions, we really don't need a lot of the infrastructure that we needed when we had fighters and aircraft out there. So find better uses for some of that property that we don't need and transform some of our older facilities into new, modern facilities. And brace and accelerate change or lose mindset, that's the Air Force Chief of Staff, talking about creating the air force that America needs to be able to compete with China and Russia and the legacy air force that has fought, you know, the counterinsurgency fight for the last 25 years. Three, establish the wing as a unit of choice, you know, the right culture to attract high caliber airmen and maintain them so they not only join, but they stay and serve and retire. And then train and exercise, I call it the home and away game. So the home game certainly heavily involved with the COVID response, from testing to setting up hospitals, to providing security, to driving school buses, we've done a lot. And then during the COVID operation, we also kept our federal missions in place and deployed over 100 airmen downrange to about a dozen different countries. So real quick, maybe of interest to everyone here, we're working on getting a new dining facility and, and repairing our medical group facility. So they were impacted in the October nor'easter that took the roof right off our dining facility. And then we had that big blizzard in January that did a lot of damage to our medical group. So working with and hopefully have the MilCon dollars really just to take those facilities. And we're gonna rebuild a brand-new dining facility and upgrade our medical. Again, as I said, trying to shrink the footprint, shrink the fence line. We currently have 3,600 acres and we're trying to get down to about 650 acres and find other owners for things like Connery Ave, which goes from the Otis Rotary all the way up through Joint Base Cape Cod and, and a better owner for the airfield as we no longer have aircraft. And then in the National Defense Appropriation Act for this year, there was language allowing us to work a transfer of the large hangar we used to use, Building 158, to the Commonwealth. Working on utilities, we're still the provider for water and wastewater. We should have a signed agreement from the United States Secretary of the Air Force, turning those assets over to Converge and Partners. Expect to have that signed by the end of next week. And then working to get a better partner to run our electrical grid, you know, more of a commercial-type utility. And then again, that kind of breaks out the airmen. So in Mashpee, there's 34 folks that work out there full-time that are Mashpee residents and there's about 227, I'll call them Cape Codders, that work out at the base. And I think I've covered our, our missions recently, the marathon. And again, we're getting ready to deploy our folks out as we start into the October through December range. So that's all I have this evening. Pending any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions?
I thought I could think of it. No.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And, oop, too much. All right. Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Skip Sheehan. I'm the commander of the Sixth Base Warning Squadron at Cape Cod Space Force Station for one more month. So enjoyed, this is our second tour out on Cape Cod. So being native and litters coming back, it's been an amazing tour. Sad to be leaving, but looking forward to handing over the reins to my replacement next month. So last year, we became Cape Cod Space Force Station. We were Cape Cod Air Force Station since the late 70s. The radar went operational in 1980 and we've been doing the same missile warning and, and space surveillance missions since then. So even though we've changed our name, I've changed my service, joined in the United States Space Force, we're still doing the same job, looking out constantly for anything that could be coming our way, making sure that if something is, we detect it, we report it within 60 seconds and then pass it on so that decision-makers make the right call. Ultimately, we're providing deterrence, hopefully preventing anybody from doing anything so I'm not actually tracking objects coming our way. Since usually things aren't being launched at us, we're doing our secondary mission, which takes a lot of time for my operators to think about and plan and prioritize and configure the radar to track the up to 45,000 objects in space that are orbiting our planet. We're tracking objects in low Earth orbit. And of those 45,000, only about 10% of them are active payloads that actually are doing something purposeful. So you've got a lot of pieces of debris, you've got a lot of dead satellites, things that aren't being used anymore. And so to keep our active satellites safe, we need to know where things are. This is the number one mission for the United States Space Command. So out here on Cape Cod, we're doing that because when you have something moving at 17,000 miles per hour and you've got people up on the International Space Station, if that thing collides with something else moving 17,000 miles per hour, that can cause a lot of damage. We also want to keep our satellites safe and we also need to know what our adversaries are doing. If something's supposed to be flying overhead at a certain time and it comes in a little early or it shows up a little late, why? Why did it move? We need to make sure people are tracking and being able to make the appropriate decision because what is that satellite's capabilities? What is it doing? Why did it do that? We need to get after that so that we can make sure everything within the domain is safe. So that's ultimately our mission. That's what we're doing 200, 365 days a year, 24/7 here on the Cape. And talking a little bit, here's some of our people taking care of the mission, doing what we need to do. In standing up a new service, there's so much change that we're looking at. How can we do things better? How can we do things differently? And all 130-ish people out on Cape Cod Space Force Station are part of the Sixth Base Warning Squadron. We've got airmen from my security forces, my defenders that protect the installation. I've got a personnelist, I've got a civil engineer, I've got a medical officer that works out of the Coast Guard clinic, and then I've got my guardians that are part of the Space Force doing the job. So it's been an amazing tour. I'm very sad to be leaving, but it's an exciting job. I'm really proud of what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. So pending any questions, that's all I have.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, but I thank you for doing your job.
I have one.
Protecting us.
I have one question. What, you mentioned the radar went online in the early 80s?
1980.
80s. What's the anticipated useful life? Does that need to be rehabilitated? Has, what like, what's the, what's the expected remaining life on that facility?
I have no end date that we're looking at shutting it down. We have a sustainment model. 2020, we upgraded the radar. It's the, went from the early warning radar to the upgraded early warning radar. We got color screens. It was pretty exciting. But between the, the computer system, the upgrades, how can we make the, the radar capable? How can we differentiate between smaller sized objects? Because that debris is huge. And when Starlink goes up and puts 60 satellites in orbit in one launch, keeping track of those and identifying them and, and differentiating between objects is incredibly important.
And how many people work on that, on base?
We have about 130. So between the airmen, the guardians, I've got civilians, and then we have a contract team.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for coming in. Good luck in your next assignment.
Thank you very much. Now I'll turn it over to my counterparts from the Coast Guard.
Good evening. My name is Commander David McCown. I'm with Coast Guard Air Station Cape Cod and this is Captain Hannigan with Base Cape Cod. And we'll kind of give you an overview of both of those units. So I represent Air Station Cape Cod. We're 176 active-duty civilian employees. We operate three H-60 helicopters and three HC-144 fixed-wing aircraft. And we do all Coast Guard aviation operations from the Canadian border all the way down to the border of New York, New Jersey. So we do all that with six total aircraft. On top of that, we also provide search and rescue and law enforcement support out to the Great Lakes region as they don't have any organic fixed-wing capability out there from the Coast Guard. So we provide that for them. And then on top of that, we provide about 40-plus volunteer auxiliary aircraft that we operate, which is the largest contingent in the Coast Guard. And most of that is local members who come out and volunteer their time, their airplanes to come out and do flights and operations for us, mostly pre-storm assessments and pollution assessments, kind of all over New England. Kind of some major events, and this is where I'm a little bit spoiled compared to my colleagues. I get to come here and talk about a lot of really good stuff we've done. We had a rescue called the fishing vessel Atlantic Destiny last March where we operated with some Canadian forces, went out and we pulled 31 mariners off of a vessel before that vessel sank. Now we did that in the middle of a nor'easter. Hurricane Ida response, went out and saved eight for Hurricane Ida. Haitian earthquake response, we responded to with our aircraft. And we do all the pre-storm and post-storm assessments, flights and response for Hurricane Henri that sent. And what that means is, we're responsible for going out and make sure all the aids to navigation are in place or didn't get displaced during the storm. So that way the maritime transportation system and all the logistics channels can still flow into New York, Boston, and the larger ports throughout New England. More recently, back on Mother's Day, we went and rescued four people off of a sailboat down off New York City that had demasted itself in that storm. And our crews just got recognized with that. They actually got to go to game seven at the Celtics game at Center Court and get recognized for that. So again, I get the easy part. I get to just tell our crews what we did. On top of the search and rescue, we also do a lot of the counter-drug efforts. Most recently, we've done about $18 million of narcotics seized through our efforts and some of the stuff that we do down in the Caribbean with our aircraft. We've interducted 24 migrants. Most recently, here locally in Nantucket, we operated with the Coast Guard Investigative Service. Service, DEA, and a couple of other agencies to do a raid where we were expecting to get about 100 fentanyl pills. What we ended up finding was about 874 fentanyl pills, 690 methamphetamine pills, hundreds of others, legal thing, about $31,000 in cash. So we were kind of going after somebody we thought might be an informant, and we actually found a bigger fish than we thought. So that was a huge win for us and our drug enforcement. The other kind of thing we do, primarily with our fixed wing aircraft, is we enforce and maintain the $14 billion New England fishery that's out here. So we make sure that all the fishermen are fishing in the right places, fishing with the right gear, and provide all that imagery and all that intelligence back to our cutter fleet so they can go make sure that those laws are enforced. And so the local populace can make sure that they are staying sustained when it comes to fisheries. So this is a long list of awards that we've won here recently. It's been a couple of good years for us at the air station. Myself and two other crews, we were recognized with the Vertical Flight Society Captain Cossler Award for that rescue with the 31 members with the Canadians. We won the 2022 Helicopter Association Pilot of the Year, the 2022 Helicopter Association Safety Department of the Year, and a bunch of other things you can see up there. And I don't say that to kind of promote us and all the great things we're doing. What I say is, those are the members who are living in your communities. Those are the members, you know, I'm a resident of Mashpee, we're living among you, and we don't do this for recognition. We do it because we like to serve the populace, and that's what we're here to do. So we really enjoy it. And that's kind of the things that the people, your neighbors are doing. And that's all for me, and I'll pass it to my colleague for base.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sean Hannigan. Thank you for the opportunity to brief today. I'm originally from Massachusetts, so psyched to be here at the Cape. It's my second year. And Base Cape Cod was set up in 2014. It's a mission support unit that provides regional support to include Air Station Cape Cod, Maritime Safety and Security Team, Port Security Unit 301, the New England Regional Fisheries Training Center, Forest Comm Armory Range, Marine Safety Detachment Cape Cod, and Sector Southeast New England. And particularly, the Maritime Safety and Security Team, they provide a broad range of port security and harbor defense missions, enhancing readiness in our nation's strategic ports. They lead or augment Coast Guard forces during major marine events, contingencies, and other Coast Guard law enforcement operations in ports, harbors, waterways, and coastal regions. The Port Security Unit 301 is an expeditionary and quick response force capable of rapid worldwide deployment. They provide security for forward deployed base camps and ports around the world where they're needed and trained to provide anti-terrorist force protection and coastal defense for missions inside and outside the United States. Sector Southeast New England's area responsibility covers over 3,000 square miles of offshore waters and 1,200 miles of coastline of Rhode Island and southeastern Massachusetts, including Cape Cod and the islands. It's responsible for a wide spectrum of Coast Guard operational missions, which include search and rescue, law enforcement, maintenance of aids and navigation, port safety and security, marine environmental protection, waterways management, marine inspection, and casualty investigation. And our service lines are illustrated here. They include comptroller base operations, facilities engineering, procurement and contracting, health, safety, and work-life, electronic support. And our personnel services include housing on and off base. On base, we have 155 family housing units, morale, welfare, and recreation. And that includes our Child Development Center. And we also have our Servicing Personnel Office and Admin Support. And that concludes Coast Guard's presentation. Pending any questions.
Anyone?
Well, we thank you for being out there because our family are boaters ourselves, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Tom?
I'm happy every time I hear the Coast Guard helicopters go over my house. And it's nice to know that they're there. And you guys do a great job. And I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mr. Collins?
As a boater, thank you for being there. No disrespect to the other military folks. And just one simple question. Have you had any problem in terms of housing for your unit members?
Overall, this year and last year has been challenging with what's available, but we've been doing well in providing on-base housing and providing support to those that are looking for housing. So challenging, but we're getting through it.
So it is challenging?
Yes.
I have one question. Last year, we supported the town of Chatham Board Selectmen in their discussion with you about the changing of the boats that were out in Chatham. You're a year into it now. Any assessment of how that's gone, second thoughts, changes in operational procedures based on that change?
No, those boats are performing well above what we expected.
Okay. And I'll echo, I mean, every time you guys come in and talk about this, I feel like the number of resources you have, the area you're supposed to cover, and the list of things you're supposed to do, I don't know how you do it with the resources you're given.
Nor do I. So, great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Colonel Matthew Porter. I'm the commander of Camp Edwards Training Site. And so Camp Edwards is not different from, you know, same thing with the Coast Guard. You know, we have a lot of the same departments that a regular town would have, or the Coast Guard has, or the Air Force has as far as DPW. We have our, you know, security. We have, you know, Environmental Radiance Center. We have, you know, Director of Plans Training, and that's kind of how we're constructed. But we also host several other entities on base as well as far as our training units. So we're home to our third of 126 aviation. We have an EOD team, engineering. We have two companies, one on the base, one keeps their equipment on base but is located just outside. We have 126 cyber, which is new to the base. So they are there in the headquarters. We have Regional Training Institute, and that is where we do most of our training as far as, you know, getting soldiers trained and their MOSs and different specialty training. We also have the Barnstable Dispatch Center is located in the State Fire Station on base as well, as well as our Army side of the Army cleanup program as well as located on base. And we're about 150 full-time personnel strong, but we do flex to about 4,000 on some weekends, certainly during the summer. So we get pretty busy. So, there we go. So yeah, so we've been pretty busy even through COVID. Our training numbers have not really fallen off. We've continued to use Contolment in a lot of our virtual training, as well as a lot of our live and constructive training out in the northern 15,000 acres, also known as the Upper Cape Water Supply Reserve. We have several exercises that we host on base, one of them which is called Operation Viking. This will be the third year hosting it. You'll probably notice some aircraft in July timeframe and some paratroopers jumping out of those aircraft. So that is all part of Operation Viking. They'll be landing on that nice soft concrete airfield. So for any of our training, anything that we've done throughout the year, as well as ammunition that we've used, or we are mandated to have the state of reservations report, and we publish that yearly. It's published in February or March timeframe. So our newest state of reservation has been published. I believe one copy is sent out to Mr. Collins or to Mashpee and all the select boards. If not, I can get you a copy, or you can get it right off the website, on the ERC website. But that has all of the information that we're mandated to put out as far as what we do for training in the Upper Cape Water Reserve. Our Natural Resource Department continues to be a strong cornerstone of what we do. As you know, you know, we're mandated to protect the habitat, protect the water and aquifer, and provide compatible military training. So, you know, one, you know, strong leg of that stool is the Natural Resource Department headed up by Jake McCumber. He hosts several tours on base, and he's also part of the tours that we've been doing on a monthly basis this year. And we were doing them more often even last summer. But since COVID, restrictions have died down, we can actually have a little more capacity on the buses if they're so we can put more into each tour, and then we can do a few less tours and make, take it a little bit easier on him. But if we do have specialty tours or groups that want to come out and do tours, Kathleen Colva is our point of contact for that. And I have her contact at the end of this presentation. Also, on the ERC website, again, that state of reservations report or any of the information that Jake has about the habitat is also in that document. Part of his program, and one of the mainstays of what we do out there, is manage for those rare species that we have. And we currently have 43 listed species on the base. So that was actually, and that's grown by two in the past couple of years. And the reason for that is, we manage very well that pine baron. And that pine baron is a mosaic of different habitats that those species need. And we do that by making sure that we have disturbance on the ground. So a pine baron is disturbance dependent, requires either mechanical or fire in order to, you know, recirculate that and recharge that environment. So that is what those species are looking for, and that's what we do. We shoot for about 600 acres a year. We generally get somewhere in the 200 to 400. It all depends on what the climate is like and what, how many rain days we have. But this year, I think we're shooting for 22 days total, and we'll probably get somewhere around 10 or 15. But more than likely, we'll get about maybe 200 to 400 acres of fire on the ground. It also is important, too, for reducing fuel load as well, because, you know, fire is something that was part of the landscape here for many, many years, and naturally. So it, when we don't have that, we get a lot of fuel that builds up, whether it's scrub oak, or pitch pine, or thick understory. And if you don't reduce that, one, it becomes bad habitat, but two, it becomes a dangerous fuel load situation. So I know there's been some interest in this over the past few meetings, so I just wanted to make sure I had a slide here for this. But when we talk about future projects, what we're looking to accomplish on the base, what we're trying to do to accomplish for training. First, we'll start with just range modernization. And just for context, you know, what we're trying to get after for our soldier training is to be able to train at the squad level. This is for the Army specifically, but to train at the squad level, which is six to nine personnel collectively. And that starts with individual weapons qual, both with rifle, crew serve weapons qual with machine gun, and then putting those together in a maneuver live fire event. So those are the types of projects that we'd be looking to accomplish on the base. And we have some of those already. So current projects right now, we decommissioned two 25-meter ranges. Those are staff ranges. Those are lead capture ranges. We don't shoot lead anymore. We shoot copper, so they weren't necessary anymore. So we took those down. And what we did is we refurbished our Tango range. We call it Tango Range. It's a 25-meter range. And that is awaiting EMC approval for the OMP, the Operational Maintenance and Monitoring Plan. So that, construction on that was complete. Like I said, it was just a, it was the same range. It was just a modernization of that range. Let me see, multi-purpose machine gun range, that's still pending EMC review. We went through the Science Advisory Council. I have not received any word on when those dates for those meetings will be. My assumption is that they are waiting, the Community Advisory Council and EMC are waiting for the sole source aquifer review to be completed before they, you know, they determine what events, what dates for those meetings will be. And then future projects, also infantry squad battle course. So that is a footprint of a range. That's a range that already exists on the base. It just has not been live for a while. So it is really just a modernization, adding new targets to that range, and then using the EMC and their comments on line of sight analysis on where we would have capture berms and that type of stuff. And then the automated record fire, that's a range that already exists. That's our most popular range. It's in a non-standard range. It's about six lanes wide. We'd like it to be 10 lanes. It's about maybe an additional three or four acres of clearing in order to make it the size that it's supposed to be in order to meet the needs of the National Guard. So those are in the range, in the upper 15,000 acres. That's the extent of what we'd be looking to do in the future. And then in Contolment, we're looking to build a new armory in 2025. That will host part of our aviation battalion as well as our engineer companies, a physical fitness track, and that is funded. And that's a MilCon project that's coming. We have a physical fitness track that's not funded but is designed. We have Phase Two of the Utes, which is a unit training equipment site. Phase One has been complete for four or five years. Actually, the ribbon cutting is going to be next week. It was going through some litigation for several years. They're actually now moving into it, which is a, which is a big win for us. But now, when they move in, it allows us to demolish their old building and put a cold storage building in its place. So that'll be Phase Two of that project. And that should be coming shortly. It's already funded. And then we continue to demolish World War II temporary housing. That's been there. Like we say, nothing's more permanent than World War II temporary housing. So there's a few that we'll probably keep, you know, just for history purposes. But there's many that we have that are just, you know, they really aren't meeting the needs. And as we get more modern facilities, we can take out and down some of the old I think I actually covered this already, but yeah, there really is not, nothing new really with MPMG. We're still waiting for, sign, Community Advisory Council and the EMC in order to have their meetings. And more than likely, that's because of the sole source aquifer review, which I don't have any updates really on that. They were waiting on our operation and monitoring maintenance program for the range. That has been provided, and we were just waiting to get that back from our regulators that had some comments on it. So then we provided that to the EPA. I do have on there some EMC meetings. Those were tentative dates that were supposed to be for this, actually, we're probably already passed it now. But, so those no longer are valid. They decided to push off to the right, and they're still trying to confirm what those dates will be. So just disregard those meeting dates there. All right. So part of what we've been doing over the past year and a half is really trying to, you know, reinvigorate our community outreach program. Had a lot of comments on different things, whether it's groundwater, habitat, noise, carbon sequestration, smoke, traffic, safety, UXO. So we're trying to develop, you know, ways of getting to the public, whether it's through our engagements at group meetings. We've done roaderies, we've done Qantas, we've done Chamber of Commerce, women's clubs, newcomers briefs, done hosted or attended many of those. And those have been very well received. But also, our tours, I think, have really been probably the most effective to really getting the information out there. And just, you know, just getting the public a little bit more aware of what happens on that base. And I think it's, like I said, very well received. We've had a great number of tours, tour members, probably roughly probably in the 500 range, I think, over the past year and a half. So it's been well received and, you know, good questions. And it's really, like I said, it's, take any pictures, you can ask any questions, any conspiracy questions, anything you want. It really is a time for the public to meet us and see it and see and is believing, at least understanding at a minimum. And then Kathleen Colva's information is there. She has been the best hire I've had in a long time. So, and she's in the audience, so I hope she heard that. But she is, she's doing an excellent job. She is relentless. I don't have a waking minute. I have either a meeting or a presentation or a tour that I'm doing pretty much, you know, at least three times a week. So it keeps me busy, but it does give me an opportunity to meet the public and engage the public. And I think that's what everybody really enjoys. And I think it's good, you know, like I said, it's not only gets us engaged with the public, it helps foster trust and understanding. And I think that's really important.
Thank you, Colonel. Anyone have any questions, Colonel Porter?
I do not.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information.
Thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the agenda, I know it's getting late. Communications, correspondence, nothing to report, nothing under old business, new business, discussion approvals, Mashpee Community Media Center MTV contract. You want to tell us what you want us to know?
Couple minor adjustments, a percentage in both.
Just the percentages and the percentage of the capital.
Yes.
Those are the only two that change other than the dates.
And we've discussed it at length, and we strongly recommend it.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about this contract?
I do not.
Mr. Chairman?
Just wait again.
Can you? Yes, I can. There's a section of the contract, Mary Wagan, Schumont Road, there's a section on the contract that lists the committees that are going to get covered. And where housing is a crisis right now in Mashpee and Cape Cod, I think the Affordable Housing Committee should be added to that list. It's on page five. It's section six. Sorry, it's page five, section six, six, item.
Nine.
Nine. They meet once, they meet once a month. And they, if they can get this room, they meet here. But they've had some pretty important meetings that there was just no media coverage. And I'm not talking about the newspaper. I'm talking about, you know, they weren't recorded or video graphed, so people could watch them if they couldn't attend. So that's just my recommendation to add Affordable Housing Committee. Thanks.
Just a question on the way this is worded to Rodney or Wayne. This is an exclusive list? In other words, if they're not listed, can it not be covered? Or do we have the ability to ask under the terms of the contract to add some?
Well, what I would say at this point is, I am not comfortable going forward and altering it without having a negotiation. So... it without having a negotiation. So you could table it and go, are we under any deadline?
We've got Chris here who can answer that question.
Yeah.
No, it's just that they, their contract runs out in May.
Yeah, the contract does expire in May. Your next meeting is June 6. If the terms, if the terms and conditions were continued, but I don't want to speak for Mr. Ball.
Chris, you have the ability to pick up any additional ones not listed on a, as needed basis, or would it be a problem under the contract?
It does put a strain on us. The sewer commission has been added to what was originally on there.
Yeah.
But under the terms of the contract, it does allow for the town manager, when needed, to give us proper notice, and we can cover it.
Okay. So given that, let's try it that way and make a, look for a motion to approve the contract as provided.
A motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
You're good.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
This, are we signing or you sign on behalf?
And Mary, if this, if there's a really important meeting that you think definitely needs to be covered, just give me a call or in my absence, Wayne, and we'll, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is discussion of a revision. I was just trying to grab it while we talked. Revision to our existing public comment policy. And this builds off what we have. Do you have any handy? Basically, what we're trying to do is make it clear, you know, that we're looking for these meetings to be an open opportunity for people to come, share their views, share their concerns, address matters of general policy that are of interest to broad number of people, or to raise a particular concern that's a problem for you as an individual. And we'll try and address it in that context. We're trying through this revised policy to ensure that people have the ability to raise specific concerns about individual performance or activity, ideally through writing. That can then be followed up on by the board as appropriate, brought in public discussion, giving all parties the opportunity to get notice and to have a positive discussion. And to keep the discussion at these meetings to common standards of civility. I know there's various views people have about what that is, but we'd like to emphasize that speakers are asked to be civil and respectful. We're not prohibiting anybody from saying anything that they want to say, within the bounds of what's reasonable and decent, frankly. Everybody agrees there's a line somewhere. I know the lines are different for some than others, but I think we're trying to establish a premise that this is a place where people can come, share their ideas, share their concerns, without fear of attack or reprisal. And so that's what this policy speaks to. It enhances a little bit what was already in existence about procedures as a matter of policy, if the board adopts this. We're going to set reasonable timelines. You'll notice there's a little LED clock here. We're going to do a three-minute countdown so everybody can see what it is. If you're doing something and it warrants a little bit more time, obviously, Chair, myself, or whoever is Chair, have some discretion, but that's kind of the standard that we're going to try and hold. Make it easy for people. We're going to ask everybody to sign up in advance. We're going to ask that people be recognized prior to speaking. We're going to ask that anyone speaking during the public comment portion of our meeting, not necessarily public hearing portion, but the public comment, do so from the lectern, regardless of who it is. So there's clarity there. We're going to ask speakers to respect the authority of the Chair, to recognize and ask people to stop. And we will make clear through this policy, if it's adopted, that the Chair has the right and authority to suspend or adjourn the meeting if behavior falls outside the norms that are called for. This is intended to enhance people's opportunity to freely and comfortably share ideas, not suppress them. And we think that, you know, we've had a challenging year. Carol did a great job navigating it. But I think that this revised policy, which builds on something that's been in place now for, excuse me, almost over three years, is sought, seeks to enhance and facilitate smooth running of this and create a welcoming environment for everybody to share their views.
I agree.
The other thing that I'm going to do as a matter of practice is public comment's going to come at the end of the meetings. So that, you know, we have an opportunity to do the business at hand. Oftentimes, some of the things that come up during public comment are addressed during the course of the meeting. And so we've listed it that way this time. It's my intention to continue to do so. So if there's no comment or request for modification, ask for a vote to adopt modified policy 081 as presented.
Make a motion to approve the amending policy of 081.
Second?
And Mr. Collins?
Just want to make mention that this has been reviewed true to form by Town Council.
Thank you. All right. Motion made and seconded to approve the revised policy. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Thank you. And then lastly, you, you'll get in your box revised or updated version of the liaison. It keeps the assignments the same in its current form, but if anybody has any desire to trade off, swap, change of scenery, let Wayne know, and we'll make adjustments to it, finalize it on the 6th. Okay?
Good.
All right. Liaison reports.
I don't have any.
None at this time.
No?
No, but I will. We're still at the Barnstable County. There was still button heads there. And we're on Zoom meetings once again. So everybody's, it's becoming more difficult. But I will keep you informed once I get some more conversational between the commissioners and the delegates.
Okay, great. Town manager update?
Just want to remind folks, the sticker sales office opens June 6. Hours will be 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Online sales will begin next week, and an email will be going out from the town clerk's office.
And fair to say we're encouraging people to do online to the greatest extent possible?
I would strongly encourage people to go online.
Why wait in line? Do it from home.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Memorial Day Ceremony, Monday, the 30th. The ceremony will take place at 10:00 AM at the Mashpee Community Park. And COVID-19 cases as of the 23rd, we added four today. There's a total of 23 cases that are moved out of isolation. There are seven current cases in Mashpee.
Great. Thank you. All right. We're going to finish up with public comment. Mary Wagan. You have three minutes, Mary. Watch the clock.
It's started. So I, Mary Wagan, Chair of the Planning Board, and I did want to thank the Chair for taking my public comment on an agenda item beforehand. I really appreciate that. But what I'm here tonight for is to promote some upcoming meetings that are really important to the town. Everybody should have received a postcard in the mail. Kudos to our town planner, Evan Lair, who got these out in lightning speed right before our meeting in May. So on this postcard, every, every household should have got one. It has two additional dates on there. June 11th, it's Saturday. It's a workshop on natural systems. It's 10 o'clock at the library. And then also July 23 on built systems. That workshop, again, is 10 o'clock at the public library. So everybody, no matter what your class and category is of a resident here in town, is welcome to come. I encourage everybody to come. These are brainstorming workshops. They're not decision-making workshops. So if you have a big idea about natural systems on June 11 or built systems on July 23, I encourage you to come. If you can't attend, the planning department has forms for you to make out and list your brainstorming ideas about these items. And also, we're going to be launching surveys soon. And the website for our local comprehensive plan, which is our plan that's going to serve to guide the town for the next 10 years, is at www.planmashpee.com. So I thank you for your time and your participation.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Meredith.
Oh, you restarted the clock?
Yep. You don't get Mary's leftovers. You get your own three.
Thank you. I wanted to speak for a couple of reasons. My name is Meredith Harris, and I live on Main Street, and I'm a member of the Sewer Commission. I've been a member for the last, for less than a year. And there are two things that I wanted to comment on. The first one is that there are two things that concern me that I spread in the Mashpee Enterprise earlier this week. And one of them was that construction is to begin on the sewer system in October. I said, that's great. That's wonderful news. But why did we hear about it in the newspaper? That was a concern. The other news is that the assistant and town manager was quoted in the same article that, saying that the Sewer Commission had not met in months and could have if they wanted to. I said, really? That's news to me. So then who's been canceling the sewer meetings for the last three months? There's been no contact with me or other members that I'm aware of, other than to get an email or cancellation notice at the, on the town meeting site. So I don't understand where that comment came from. So the main thing I wanted to say is that I'm a volunteer and part of town government. I'm a resident of Mashpee. I've been here for over 50 years. I'm interested in good, clean, quality water in our bays, our ponds, our rivers, and our estuaries. I swim here a lot, and I need clean water to swim. And that's why I became involved as a volunteer in town government. But my comments are not about me or the Sewer Commission. It's about asking for transparency and asking for answers. Has there been a decision on what Phase One is going to be, or has it changed since last March? What's happened about Phase Two and the decision and who is going to design and build it? Is there even going to be a Phase Two? More importantly, what plan is in effect to provide wastewater management and clean water for the whole town? What plan is now being used or followed to address wastewater management, the building of the sewers and connecting the whole town? And what parts of this town will be sewed and when? When will these questions be answered? I see that there are follow-ups to other issues that have been raised earlier in the year. There's been nothing discussed about water in the last three months, and that's not, that's not appropriate. Is there still a Sewer Commission? If there is, then let us know. If there is not, let us know. Why has no one from the Select Board or the town manager's office contacted any of us to let us know one way or the other? Do we still exist or not? We need transparency. We need to know what is going to be happening in terms of taking care of wastewater on, in the town. And that was my primary comment.
Thank you, Meredith.
Just in town.
I think it's fair to say there'll be some discussion of some of the issues you raised on the June 6 meeting.
Okay. And I'll follow this up with a question and an email.
I know we typically don't respond to public comments, but I do believe it's appropriate to clarify a couple of things. Number one, nobody has contacted my office to ask any of these questions. Number two, we have consulted with the senior member of the Sewer Commission, who is, I guess, the acting Chair. And I think it's also fair to say we've been soliciting members for the Sewer Commission. We've had ads. And there's been limited responses so far, but we are continuing to solicit people. If anybody's interested in joining the Sewer Commission, which still does exist, then we certainly welcome them to not only express their interest, but to submit their interest accordingly. There will be more to follow. I am working currently with GHD, NEP, as well as some potential revisions, which I don't think are appropriate to comment on right now. But I think it's fair to say that I'll be coming before the Select Board as well as the Sewer Commission very shortly. But I expect everything will be on time in terms of Phase One. In regards to Phase Two, I await the decision of the Select Board and the Sewer Commission to proceed accordingly. But we all want clean water. We're all advocating clean water, and that mission will continue. And as far as some of the hurdles along the road or hiccups along the way, what is it that the Marines say improvise, adapt, and overcome? And we move on.
Okay. And on that note, we're going to adjourn.
Second.
Good night.